Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. Tonight, we note that we have a full quorum. All the council members are in attendance or participating in the meeting this evening. And as has been our tradition now for a while, we will have an inside the city video. And I believe they're ready for that. Today on Veterans Day, we are dedicating a monument, a memorial for Utah veterans who gave their lives in combat. It's a tribute to those, and it is unique in the state of Utah because nowhere else have we put together all of the names. All 2,945 individuals who died in all the various combat situations since World War I.
Those who paid the price, those who fought the fight, put themselves in harms way, were really working to give us these kind of days. We can literally dream, dream big, work hard, and one day see our dreams come to fruition. There's nothing like this great country, but we can do these things.
I always say, "We served," not "I served," because families serve. For every veteran who's in Afghanistan, Iraq, or wherever they might be, there's someone back home who worries about them and is praying for them.
As long as there's a veteran, a family member, an American, here, we will remember their sacrifice and the things that they did for our country, the things that they gave up with their families surrendered.
It's important that we remember that the freedoms we enjoy today came at a price. And at times, that was the ultimate prize for these individuals. And we need to honor their memory and make sure that we do not forget what they did for our freedoms today. I'm very pleased to see it come to fruition. This is the first phase. We're not done yet. We're going to do more. We're going to honor all veterans, but we wanted to make sure that the primary purpose, the part that got the most visibility, was for those who paid the ultimate price. Don't forget. Don't forget. Thank you. That was quite an experience for those of us who were in attendance there. And certainly encouraged anyone in the public to stop by and take a moment to visit that memorial. And great work was done by Jake Arslanian to kind of manage that project and shepherd it. And in truth, those who were involved in its construction, some of the, certainly Oakland Construction and a number of the subcontractors who did work on it, went out of their way to make sure that it was completed by Veterans Day to be ready for that dedication services. So we appreciate everyone who participated in that. And we were certainly fortunate to have two of our US congressmen in attendance to assist us with that. Now, I will need some help here because I think, and I'm pretty sure we have a Congress, excuse me, a council member-elect joining us tonight. Mr. Harmon, so we recognize you now that you have been officially elected. Even though you can't vote yet, that'll come shortly. And so that's part of that great American process where people are elected and people step back. George Washington set the great example for that. And let's see. Not anyone else that I need to recognize? Okay. I have to look out here and make sure. Okay. So we are somewhat unique as a country where we so easily change leadership. And generally without bloodshed. We had a smear on that recently and what happened at our US Capitol. But what we've seen happen in other countries has never happened here with coups and bloodshed and everything else. So it's great to be in America, and it's great to be in West Valley City. With that, then, we will take care of our first item of regular business, the approval of the minutes of November 9th. Someone would make a motion. Move to approve those minutes. Property before us. No further comments, then without objection, the minutes will be approved. There were no objections, so it's unanimous. Next, we have our public comment period. We've had two people sign up. And so we will invite them to come forward. We don't have any online, do we? Okay. Then first we'll hear from Mr. Paul Nichols. Invite him to come forward.
Paul C. Nichols, live at 5329 West, 4100 South. The traffic in the morning and at night is horrible. They've had two really bad wrecks there the last month. I traveled the other morning at early, half the trucks run around lights, 41st and 4100. Or 3141st. It's horrible to drive that time of morning without, against the guys of lights. And there's no officers around until you get this last wreck. There was nine officers there. That's the only time I've seen that many cops at one time down. Plus, on 3200 West, I see the crew from West Valley cutting limbs off the sidewalk. When did that start? So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mike Markham.
Mike Markham, 3008 Alice Circle. This is a different note than what I usually talk about. But I would like to commend Mark Nord on the work that he does within his area. He's got the right idea. You go out, you make friends. That's what brings you businesses, friendship. You got to make them feel important, that you want them, and you take care of them. Maybe sometimes he'd have to make a decision detrimental to West Valley City, but in the long run, it helps. Trust me, I've been in the business, in the sales business for almost 50 years. My customers that are left are friends. I've gone through the divorces with them, the childbirths, the child's, the kids that have passed away at birth, weddings, their family. If you make people family and you make friends with them, they're going to work with you. So we can't go in and big deal anybody. You have to be careful who you big deal. I'm one guy who don't big deal well. So I would like to commend Mark on his job in getting out and making friends and bringing people to the city that are substantial. And then one follow-up comment to the Veterans Memorial, and I've kind of said it before, that we also need to look to helping the veterans that are living. And we talk about families, what the families went through while the veteran was serving overseas. Let's look back at what some of the families are dealing with now with what the veterans bring home. It's not always pretty, trust me. Trust me, it's not always pretty what a veteran brings home to their family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir. Please step forward.
Jim V. Sock. First of all, in the study meeting, you guys were talking about campaign finance questions and all that stuff. As a first-time candidate this time, any question that I had, I could send an email, call, or talk to Nicole personally, and she got back with the answer. Or she would say, "Call Lieutenant Governor's Office, call Elections Office." Most of the time, she had the answer. I would still call to make sure, you know, it's the right answer. But she was great, great, great help for a brand-new candidate. And I think every candidate that ran would say that if they reached out to her. So I wanted to recognize her because she did spend a lot of time. The package she put together is clear. It's simple. Why somebody doesn't do something that takes 30 seconds, you know, the final disclosure? I mean, how much is it different? The hard one is the middle one, you know, so. But I just wanted to recognize her. Utah Veterans Memorial, man, what a great, what a great program, a great thing. For the last six weeks, I've been following it, and I would report to Mayor every week, and I'm like, "I don't think they're going to get it done. I don't think they're going to get it done." Jake, Jake, Mayor, and I were all talking three weeks before, and I'm like, "Man, it sure doesn't look like it's going to get done." Those next two weekends, there were so many cars on the Culture Center Road. You could hardly drive down, but they had so many people working on it to meet that deadline. And what a great event, what a beautiful memorial. I look forward to it as it grows to be in there. That, that's the positive. Oh, one more thing on the campaign finance. You guys are talking about some reforms and stuff. Clear disclosures on the financial reports. That's all I want to say about that. Clear disclosures. So last week, I didn't say anything because we were going for a record to see how fast we could get out. Seven minutes. I believe there was a six-minute one before that I was part of. But going to keep bringing it up until it's fixed. West Valley Families Fitness Center, locker rooms, showers. Let's see, what's my other, and toilet areas in the men's? Not being cleaned. I can say it for a fact. There's, you know, soap that builds up. People put their bars up on the top. It's been there. I have pictures. Dirt on the wall from when they changed the shower curtains. They're not going down, you know, simple washing down the showers at night. I don't know what they do in there. Now there's this terrible smell in one of the showers. It's got to be coming from the drain. It's overflowing in water. It overflow when they're doing it. It's, the procedure is, guard you're supposed to go through, they're on a regular thing. People are supposed to be checking. That is not happening. I'm there three to four hours a day. I don't see them going through. Today, there was an incident in one of the family changing room. A citizen came up to me and said, "Jim, I'm going to give it to you." I says, "You need to report it, and you need to send emails to the appropriate people if it's not getting done. If I'm the only one doing it, then I'm the only one complaining." So I'm going to, you know, tell others. They have to complain also. Got a lot of unhappy employees throughout the city. They're being, they're being overworked because of the shortage. I understand there are shortages and stuff. It's, we're asking them to do more and more and more that two people used to do, three people used to do. That's not fair to them. At least, that's my personal opinion. So that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. Yes, please come forward, and we recognize Representative Winder, an elected official here with us tonight.
Thank you, mayors and council members. Good to be with you. Sorry I didn't get in to sign up for the public comment period. I had the privilege tonight to speak to your West Valley Youth Council. Clover invited me to go visit with them, and we just wrapped up. And as I was wandering out, I heard some familiar voices and decided to see what's going on here on a Tuesday night. And lo and behold, we're still having council meetings, which is a good thing. I just wanted to say hi since I was in the building, and congratulations to those who ran and won recent elections. And it's fun to see the city continue to march forward. Mayor Bigelow, I also want to express a congratulations to you and the rest of the team on the Veterans Memorial. I had a son with wisdom teeth out and missed all the fun to-dos that day, but I was able to go down privately later and check it out. And what a beautiful addition it is to that Cultural Celebration Center campus. And it's fun. I was at a City Manager Association meeting with Wayne just the past week or two down at the Cultural Center. And it's fun to hear just the rave reviews from city managers all around the state of how amazing that facility is and how beautiful the setting is. And it's fun to see the remodel there and in this building since I've been here last more often. So just to, just wanted to say hi and congratulations and keep up the good work. You're doing some good heavy lifting in some very tough times and know that it's appreciated. That when we see the, the streetlights on 41st and drive down that construction-free road now, how beautiful it is and the good work there. We're hearing Utopia expanding in ways that we only dreamed of 10 years ago. We're seeing buildings here by the Valley Fair Mall that were literally just dreams 10, 15 years ago. And so it's so exciting to still be part of the West Valley community and see things going forward. I know that as we're gearing up for the upcoming legislative session, but we have interim meetings again tomorrow, and the session will start again mid-January. We're working closely with Nicole and Wayne and the rest of your team on, on issues that may affect this city and other cities. And so we'll be up there fighting the good fight representing West Valley once more. So just want to say hi and thank you. So.
Thank you very much.
And now you stay, and I get to go home. So there's that.
Okay, was there anyone else who wanted to take part in our public comment period? Seeing none, then we will come back and see if our city manager has any comments.
No comments, sir. Thank you.
Council members, any comments?
Just a quick comment. Mayor, I've driven by the Veterans Memorial several times over this last weekend, and there have been people in the memorial every time I've gone by, no matter what time of day or night. There've been people there honoring their veterans, and it's an attraction for people now.
Just to note, some of you may have noted on the wall that the names are not in alphabetical order. They are grouped by conflict, generally speaking. But the city online will be, will have a directory to help people identify where any particular name is, and they can look it up. So the city is making that service available. Most people are able to do that electronically now. So people will be able to find the location of any individual that they want that's on the wall. With that, then, we will take care of the agenda items we have. We'll begin with a public hearing to introduce the application number Z-6-2021 filed by the Architectural Coalition requesting a zone change for property at 7035 West Gates Avenue. That particular piece of ground is just under a half an acre to change it from agricultural to manufacturing so that they can, they have some pieces there and come, working with all of these. That's in an area where manufacturing is around that. So this is a pretty straightforward issue. And they're proposing for parking and at some point putting a two-story office building there. So kind of just some improvements in that area. That's kind of a general introduction. If the council wants to add anything before I open the public comment period? Okay, then we'll open the public comment period. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? Anyone online or calling?
No, sir.
Okay. See, here noting there's no one to expressing a desire to speak to this. Then we will close the public comment period, bring it back to the council for any further action or discussion.
I would move to approve ordinance 21-62.
Properly before us, any further comments on this ordinance, 21-62? If not, then to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang.
Yes.
Councilman Buhler.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have a resolution to consider.
Move for approval of Resolution 21-185.
Second.
Properly before us. No further comments then to our city recorder.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Buhler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang.
Yes.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have on our agenda Resolution 21-186. This is to authorize the city to enter into a stakeholder agreement between our city and the Utah Transit Authority. This is for the purpose of utilizing some funds. They're called Tiger, Tiger Grant, for property at 2780 West, 4700 South, UTA property. And they will contribute $154,269 for improvements for the sidewalk along that property. And this will be a part of the 2700 West project. That was the last piece that we were, I think we were looking at. I think, does that complete all those on that?
I'm not sure it's the very last piece. You may see, who knows? There could be some consent agenda item for another piece of easement. But yes, Mayor, correct. This is
Most of them are
One of the last pieces of
One of the last pieces, all right. So that's the proposal before us to accept those funds and do that work. So to the council.
I would move for approval of Resolution 21-186.
Second.
Properly before us. Hearing no further comments, then to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang.
Yes.
Councilman Buhler.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have Consent Resolution 21-187. This is again on the 4700 South project. Interestingly enough, a neighbor, since I live on Waterwood Drive, but I'm not on 4700 South, a ways away. But this is for the traditional real estate purchase agreement, warranty deed, perpetual easement, temporary construction easement for property at 4688 South Waterwood Drive. With that introduction, then, to the council.
I move for approval of Resolution 21-187.
Second.
Properly before us, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Buhler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang.
Yes.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Then, under New Business, we are convening as a Board of Canvassers as directed by state law in state code for the municipal general election that was held November 2nd of this year. And we will consider Resolution 21-188, which show the official results of that election. And we're required to do that within a certain time period to make the results official and final. So those are available before us and are shown in that resolution. And so I'll just stop there, and certainly anyone can make comments. I might have a few comments after, just general. But as far as dealing with these official results, any comments or?
One, one comment that I would like to make, Mayor, is that we had 28.78% of our registered voters voting in this last election. And normally, this one being the off-year, has been more down around the 11% to 17%. And so I appreciate the work that our city recorder did in getting the word out to the voters and the work that she did in cooperating with the county and getting the mail-in ballots, mail-in ballots, out and encouraging voters to get them back in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 21-188, accepting and approving the results as shown in the canvas report.
Second.
Okay, it's properly before us. Any further comments before we do the vote and make it official? Okay, to our city recorder.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang.
Yes.
Councilman Buhler.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Just a general comment, as we have completed that portion of the election process, to everyone who participated as a candidate, whether in the primary or general election, our thanks for those who live here in West Valley who participated and were willing to get involved and express their opinions and to talk to people. And to those who were successful in that endeavor to be elected, congratulations to each of you for the work that you will do or continue doing. And it's great to be a part of that process. You know, our elected officials are the representatives of the people to ensure that their voices are heard, not always followed, given the many different opinions we have within our citizenry, our residents of West Valley. We could never appease them all 100%, but we strive to do that. And that's part of the great American process where people can disagree on issues, where citizens of different backgrounds can disagree on issues, where citizens of different backgrounds and concerns can disagree on issues but still live in peace within the same neighborhoods and move forward in what we do. So thank you to everyone who was involved in that. We say to those who were unsuccessful, we hope you stay involved and participate in your neighborhoods and in the city council discussions, and keep track of what we're doing. There is not a need for a closed session. So that concludes our agenda items. Anyone else want to say anything tonight? Nope. Then we're done. Motion to adjourn. Without objection, we will stand adjourned. There were no objections, so that was unanimous. And thank you all for coming tonight.